Good evening. We'd like to call the Planning Commission to order for the City of Guthrie for Thursday, September 13th. Ms. Blaine, could we have a roll call, please?
Vern Ogden.
Here.
Joe Chapo.
Here.
Don McBride, absent. Rene Spinato, absent. Chris Bryant.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Public comments, unless there are public comments other than the items that are on the agenda. Anybody have anything else other than that? Then we'll move on to the agenda. Two items that were on the agenda have been tabled. Discussion and possible action for the partial road closure at Pulse Drive and discussion and possible action for the partial road closure on Popular Drive. Could you give us some thoughts on that, staff, please, Ms. Blaine?
Yes, we still need to obtain the no contest letters from any utility, phone company, anyone that might potentially have an interest in that easement. On the city's side, we're not seeing any issues, but we do need to wait until those come in before we have all the information. So we anticipate we'll have that by our next meeting on October 11th.
Okay, and for you that came with that tonight, if you're still here, thank you, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Item six is the discussion and possible action regarding amending a portion of Ordinance 2422 specifically residential accessory structures. And we've asked our city manager, Mr. Lee Roeth, also, to give us a little overview of the subject. And then I know some of you have signed up, and we will get your thoughts and take them into consideration. So with that, city manager, good to have you here, sir.
Did you skip approving your minutes?
Yes. On purpose.
On purpose, okay.
Glad you were checking in the agenda, though.
I was paying attention. I've got some notes if you want to follow along with this. and residential. And tonight, what we're concentrating on is specifically residential accessory buildings. And we are truly supportive of the historic and architecture nature of our community, especially in the historic district. And we also think there are some view sheds that are the front door of our community along the major corridors, Division Street, and, of course, Highway 33 or Noble. We do have some concerns that when the residential appearance standards were designed, that the one-size-fits-all rule may have been a little too far-reaching, and maybe we need to look at that. And there are some areas of our community subject to neighborhoods that have their own subdivision covenants that set their own rules, that there should be some allowance for metal buildings, for accessory buildings, with metal buildings meeting certain standards. With that being said, what I thought I would do first is just refresh everybody's mind on the existing residential accessory building appearance standards. And you find out two places. One is in Ordinance Number 3206, which is in Article 2 Building Design Standards, and then Section 4-432 is the residential appearance standards. And in that 4, 5, 8, and 11 paragraphs pretty much cover the design standards for accessory buildings. On roofs, no shake or corrugated metal roofs are permitted. All gutters, downspouts, and rooftops, vents shall be treated with a color similar to the exterior materials. Gutters shall be visually unattractive. Number five, exterior walls. Building materials must be similar to materials of structures in the city, i.e. stone, brick, wood, or wood simulated siding. Materials such as aluminum siding, as well as synthetic stucco, ephes, are not historic cladding materials and shall not be used. However, cement board materials such as hardy board may be substituted for wood siding. And on color, number eight, the use of colors that are compatible with the surrounding area is highly encouraged. Color determination shall be based on historic schemes appropriate for the style of the building. Reference materials are available from the Guthrie Planning Department. And then number 11, outbuildings. Accessory buildings must be of similar color to the main residence, and the material must be complement to main residence. Placement of all outbuildings, regardless of size, must be to the rear of the front facade of the residence. And then under Zoning Ordinance 2422, Section 6.1, the architect, design, and materials used for the construction of accessory buildings and fences shall harmonize with the main building to which said building or fence is accessory. So that covers what we have on accessory buildings. The biggest issue we get into is the exterior siding, and can you use metal? Amendments that we would like to throw out for consideration. Again, tonight, we don't expect the Planning Commission to adopt or recommend the City Council adopt an ordinance to change these. What we hope that we can accomplish tonight is to see if the Planning Commission is receptive to a general direction that staff's proposing to them. If the concepts we're presenting is receptive to the Planning Commission, then staff will go back and actually develop a full-scale ordinance with these concepts in it for your consideration at a future meeting. Of course, definitions, residential accessory building structure or use in a residential zoning district or property in any other zoning district being used for residential use. In our case, you can build a residence in another zoning district besides residential. So what this ordinance would cover when we amended is it would clearly cover any residentially zoned property and any other zone property that's being used for residential purposes. An accessory building is a subordinate building, structure, or use which is located on the same lot as the main residential building and which is reasonably necessary and incidental to the conduct of the primary use of such principal building or use. The accessory building shall not be used for commercial purposes and shall not be rented. Garage, private, an accessory building or accessory portion of the principal building which intended for and used to store the private passenger vehicles of the family or families residing upon the premises. So a garage is an accessory building if it's a standalone garage. It's just a special accessory building. Location of a residential accessory building. We think all detached accessory buildings shall be located behind the furthest rear wall of the main residential structure on the property unless otherwise permitted herein. Of course, there are some lots because of size or configuration that might not be applicable to, but as a standard, the accessory building goes behind the house, not side of it, not in front of it.
They would have the option of a variance for that.
Correct. No accessory buildings or structures shall be located within a front, side, or rear yard area unless otherwise permitted herein. So it meets the same setback requirements as the primary structure.
Would that include the 200-square-foot buildings that aren't required to have a permit?
Yes. Our recommendation is that whether a permit is required or not, it still has to meet all of the standards for an accessory building. It's just that if it's under 200 feet, it would not require a building permit, but you still have to meet the standards. We are proposing an exception to that within, we're proposing when we get down to it, an overlay district that would be the same boundaries as the historic district, and all accessory buildings in the historic district would require a building permit, no matter what the size.
Repeat the first part of that.
We're doing an overlay district, which means anything within the historic district would require a building permit even if it's less than 200 feet, because we think that the historic district has unique architectural and historic characteristics that we desire to maintain. So we feel there we should go the extra step, and no matter the size of the building, it should, the accessory building should get a permit to make sure it fits in that historic district. But the rest of them, if it's under 200 feet, square feet, would not require a building permit, but still meet the standard. Restrictions on the use of residential accessory buildings. Accessory buildings are to be used by the property owner of the lot on which they are located. Accessory buildings shall contain living quarters, shall not contain living quarters, I'm sorry, nor more than one toilet and one wash basin restroom plumbing fixture. Accessory buildings shall not be used as dwelling spaces. We do think that on some of the accessory buildings, like if I'm on a larger piece of property and I have a shop of some sort, if I get something on myself, I'm going to want to have an opportunity to wash my hands and get it off of me, and I may want to have a toilet in there, but it would be like a half-bath would be the most you could have. You could have plumbing fixtures limited to one toilet and one wash basin. Cannot use them in a dwelling. Other restrictions that we would propose. Accessory building is not permitted without a main or primary structure. So you can go on a lot and build a garage or something. It has to be on the same property as a primary structure. If you own two lots and you want to have a garage on the second lot, then you would have to go through the process of combining those two lots into one so that the accessory structure is sitting on the same lot, and you could do a lot combo. But you cannot build an accessory building as a standalone building on a piece of property and then sell it later. Accessory dwelling unit may not be sold separately from the sale of the entire property, including the main dwelling unit, and shall not be sub-lot. All detached accessory buildings shall have a hip or gable roof unless the main building or primary structure has a flat roof. So we expect them all to have gable roofs unless that particular site, the main structure, has a flat roof, then we feel that you could have a flat roof on your accessory building. All residential accessory buildings must meet the standards set forth herein. However, residential accessory buildings 200 square feet and smaller do not require a building permit unless they are within the Guthrie Corporate Townsite Historic District Overlay District. Shipping containers. Shipping containers placed on any site shall comply with the provisions of this section. Look-alike shipping container buildings or metal buildings marketed as containers or portable storage units are regulated as shipping containers to which this section shall apply. Placing a shipping container on a city street or right-of-way is not allowed. There is exception. Portable moving containers, moving pods placed on private property for no more than 30 days in any 12-month period should not be regulated by this section. So if you're relocating or moving, you can have a moving pod on your property for that 30-day limit. Residential. Shipping containers are not allowed in any residential zoning district or on property in any other zoning district being used for residential use. A temporary permit for a shipping container may be obtained for containers used auxiliary to a project with a valid residential building permit. Temporary permit may allow placement of a container at a residential building site for up to 180 days for temporary storage after the building permit is issued. The temporary permit cannot be extended. So if you're in construction of a home, you could have a shipping container for storage of your equipment and stuff, the same as the 180-day construction permit for building your home, and it wouldn't be extended.
How would that affect existing storage containers in residential areas?
Anything that grandfathered, we would have a difficulty time.
If it's been there 10 years, sure.
It would be grandfathered, and we'd have a difficult time doing anything about it, but if it was ever moved, it could not go back. Okay, now we are going to divide all of the residential property and any other property that's zoned differently but used for residential. We're going to divide it into three categories, and I'll go through each category. We're going to have one set of rules for all the property that's within the historic district. We're going to have a second set of rules for any property that's, and these numbers can be changed, but right now we're throwing out 1,000 feet from the center line of Division and Noble on either side. There's a set of rules for those. And the one for the historic district is to maintain and protect the appearance and the architectural value we have in our historic district. The rules for the property adjacent to our primary roads in our community, it's a front door of the community, and it's the protective view shed as you come into the community. And then the balance of the residential property is the third category. So it'd be three different categories. So the first one, overlay district, number A, is the Guthrie Capital Townsite Historic District. So that would be an overlay. It wouldn't matter what zoning you're setting on, if it's used as residential property or zoned residential, these rules would apply to it. To preserve and protect the historic and architectural value of the historic district. It would regulate any residential accessory buildings on residential zone properties and on property in any other zoning district being used for residential use. All residential accessory buildings within the historic district, no matter their size, shall require a building permit. Exterior walls, the prohibition of metal buildings and synthetic stucco or ephes remain. Exterior walls shall be constructed of either brick, stone, stucco, wood siding, or wood simulated, or some kind of cement board. And that's our current rules. Roofs, no shake or corrugated galvanized metal roofs are permitted. In this district, I didn't know. I think we might want to discuss that where we go allow metal roofs at all. And then all gutters, downspouts, rooftop vents shall be treated with a color similar to the exterior metals. Gutters shall be visually unattractive. Color. The use of colors that are compatible with the main building and surrounding area is required. Color determination shall be based on historic schemes appropriate for the style of the building. Reference materials are available at the Guthrie Planning Department. And the historic district has a palette of colors that's acceptable within the historic district, colors that were used back in the 1890s, early 1900s. The square foot size and roof peak height would be restricted based on the size of the property. And we'll get into later, we have a format on different sizes of property and how tall and how much square footage you can have based on the size of the property. The site plan and building plan for all residential accessory buildings are subject to approval by the Historic Planning Commission. So their building permits would go through the Historic Planning Commission for approval. The next one is overlay district along Noble and Division, 1,000 linear feet from the street center line both ways, and that's to maintain the aesthetic view shed to the front door of our community. Whether it's 1,000 feet, 500, or whatever, that can be debated, but some width along those corridors, we think, should be protected. Similarities are the same. It would regulate any residential accessory building within that 1,000 feet on both sides of those two roads. Metal buildings and synthetic stucco would remain prohibited, and the exterior walls shall be constructed of either brick, stone, stucco, wood siding, or wood simulated, or cement fiberboard. Roofs, no shake or corrugated galvanized metal roofs are permitted. Whether we allow metal roofs at all in this corridor is something I've got in there for discussion. And then all gutters, downspouts, and rooftop vents shall be treated with a color similar to the exterior materials of the property, and gutters shall be visually unattractive. Color, the use of colors that are compatible with the main building is required. And again, the square foot size and roof peak height would be restricted based on the size of the property. And we will come up with a chart, and if this size or smaller, this is what you're limited to as far as the size. If the property's bigger, it could be a larger or taller building, and the ideal is we would come up with a chart so no matter what size property you have, you would still be restricted not to build a storage shed, whether it's made out of wood, brick, stone, or metal. The size and the roof peak would be limited so that it would be compatible with the neighborhood that's in. Now, those are the two overlay districts. Now, the third category is all others. Any other property that's not in the historic district or within 1,000 feet of those two primary roads, the rules would be different, and it would regulate any residential accessory building in those areas. In this area, the exterior walls, exterior walls shall be constructed of either brick, stone, stucco, synthetic ephes, wood siding, or wood simulated, cement board, or metal. Now, we do think that while we're proposing metal in these other areas in the community, there should be some standards for the metal. So we're saying metal buildings must meet the following standards to be permitted. Must have a pre-installed finished paint. Must have a raised or standing seams. Must be a minimum of 26 gate steel, and must have corner trim. And while you could not have galvanized metal roofs, you could have metal roofs. The color, again, the color scheme has to be compatible with the main building on the property. And again, the square foot size and the roof peak would be restricted based on the size of the property. The contemplated categories that we're going to use to determine the size and the roof peak height limitations is we thought that we would have one standard for lots less than one-half acre. Another standard for those that are larger than a half acre but smaller than one and a half. And then a third one for lots that are larger than one and a half but less than three. And then a fourth one for lots that are three acres or greater. We're not married to these, but these are some that we've seen in other ordinances. We just didn't come up with, out of our head. And we can get into the limitations. I think Rebecca probably has better notes on that than I do. And then agricultural zone land is still under consideration. We're still doing some review, but we think there might be other considerations if you are zoned agriculture to not only have an outbuilding, but maybe also a barn if you have agricultural land. So we haven't, we've had a few other projects, and we didn't get to that one. Before we get into what size for each of these categories, I guess I would see if you want to have input from the ones in the public, and then also discussion between staff and the commission members if this is a concept, are we going in a direction that's palatable to the Planning Commission, or we're too far in left field and you want to realist in and you don't like metal buildings at all?
I understand the need for change and compromise, for sure. When I look at this, the only, the concern that I have, and I have talked to several people today that live in and around my neighborhood, there are neighborhoods that, for example, it looks like, you know, like 1,000 feet from Cleveland Street. You know, Cleveland Street, the historic district stops at Oak Street, which means that 1,000 feet down Cleveland, you'll reach a point where the homes would not be protected, like around the temple. It seems like to me there needs to be maybe some additional overlay to, you know, neighborhoods that have 100-year-old homes, like north, this side of the Dominion House, that neighborhood back in there, those neighborhoods need to be, their historical integrity needs to be protected, I think.
And we, staff, would not object to that if we can identify.
But I think this is, I think this is a, basically a good idea, just some tweaking.
Sure. And we would be receptive to anybody's input on.
And I didn't know.
Neighborhoods that should be added.
If, of course, the Historical Commission, I didn't know, and I'm on that. I mean, I don't know if that would even be proper for them to consider what neighborhoods have 100-year-old homes or 80-year-old homes, or if that's just something with staff and...
Their power is limited to the historic district. So I would say that it would fall in the preview of the Planning Commission for anything outside of the historic district would be my understanding.
My thought was like, I would just hate to see half the houses on Cleveland protected and the other half down towards the temple. They can do whatever they want.
Understand.
Yeah, so.
Regular stuff.
And what we're trying to do tonight is concepts.
Yeah. And as a concept, I think, I think this is making sense with some tweaking here and there.
Chris? Yeah, it makes sense in the historically recognized areas to be more restrictive than we have been, but then, and for some other types of property to be maybe less restrictive. On the west side where I live, you know, that, that part of town was developed very incrementally, it seems like, and so we have, we have mansions.
There's some historical areas over there.
But it's very much of a mix, and so it'd be really hard to define what's historic and what's not because it grew up, you know, rather incrementally over time instead of all at once, so. But I would, but I would want to maintain, you know, the integrity as much as possible there, too, so.
I think, Mr. Allsup, this is a great start, I really do. You guys have worked very hard on this, I can see. The last information we have, for those that are here, big heavy book here, looked like a lot of these were approved back, back in 2009. So certainly things have changed, community has changed, and I think it's a great start. I heard a couple of things, mother-in-law house, maybe there's something in other communities that you might want to think about that. And you've got some things here on the debatable on the 1,000 feet. I'd like to maybe ask now any of these folks here that have anything to add. And then what we've thought a little bit down the line is, we knew a lot of this was coming because we knew the staff was working hard on this, is that especially having all, we needed all five... needed all five of our commissioners to have a little roundtable, we call a workshop, and you would be notified of that, so you could come to and give us your input, while we would come up with a final draft. This is a great start, and then we would come up with a final draft that, that we would then give to the city council, and they might take it, they might want to tweak it a little bit, but an excellent, excellent start. There's a lot of work here, and I certainly applaud you for that. Do we have some folks now who would like to give us a little input, and if you have signed up, I think, one's already raised her hand, so you can sit back down there. Lady behind you raised her hand first.
You know how long it takes me to get up?
I do. Would like to, like, like to ask you to give your name and address for the record, and then we can limit you to about over four or five minutes.
Well, I'm gonna sit down. I'm Kathy Porter, 609 Hamill Lane, and I would ask before anything is put down, that you people drive around Guthrie, because there's not a lot of lots that are going to be able to have any size building hidden behind them, and people that live on corners tend to want to expand further, it's been my, my thing. We travel a lot, and some people have heard of Guthrie and asked me about Guthrie, and I always describe it as a historically beautiful little town. Well, I have a metal building. It's hidden, you can't see it. We bought it to house my lawnmower, I've hit it with the lawnmower. The only way to patch it is some wood on the outside, the roof leaks, and there's rust on it already, but like I say, it is hidden, but it wouldn't matter if it was a 1,000-foot building. They are not built like regular buildings, and I think you need to keep that in mind when you make these rules, because I don't want to start telling people, I live in a lovely historical town with a lot of old worthless buildings falling apart on lots, but very few lots actually would, would sustain a building of any size. And the last thing I have to say, because, and the other thing, is the trolley goes all through Guthrie, so you'll have to change that route if you're going to let them have these awful buildings sitting anywhere. But until we have some teeth in our rules, because as long as you don't ask and you get it put up, it's, it's fine, it's yours, and that's wrong. We might as well do away with all the rules if we're not going to back them up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Porter, appreciate that. Next?
You sure?
Nope, there's already, no, nope, behind you.
My name's Chris Davis, I live at 406 Stonegate Drive. We're new residents to Guthrie. We came to Guthrie because it's a unique place, and we've been educated about this ordinance since we've been here. So we moved in over there, and we're remodeling this house, and we requested to put up the building, and I found out what all's going on. And I know there's other people, too, that I've talked to, and I understand the dilemma you're in, and everything, most everything he said I agree with, you know, because in Oklahoma, a lot of places, we see people take some lumber, they put up a lean-to, next thing you know, they've got some tin on it, and there it is. But I think if someone submits something to you and you can look at it, you know, see that it's a quality building, you know, that's half the battle right there. But in the meanwhile, there's some people out there who are, our life's basically on hold. I need this building. I need this building for stories, it's not going to sit for, boats and things aren't going to sit out in the street for my neighbors. I don't want them all to have to look at that. So, you know, we appreciate y'all looking at this, taking this into consideration, but trying to expedite as quickly as you can for, for some of the residents.
Can you embellish on what you've asked for, that you're holding, you're being held upon right this time? Can you tell the committee, the commission?
Yeah, I've submitted to put up a Morton building, a 22 by 30 building. It's two-tone, pre-painted, metal building with gutters and all that. It's a, it's a professional building, we can get it two-tone, we're going to have colors to match our home, it was going to be set back, it's away from all the set-back areas. And in my area, really, the, there's only one person that's going to be able to see this, it's going to be my neighbor to the south of me, but...
And can you tell them your lot size, Chris, out there?
Oh, I see.
Like roughly?
Whole lot, lot 10, and, and third, and third, and lot 11.
Dimensionally, it's probably, I'm going to say 110, 120 feet deep by 250, 300 foot wide.
By the information that the city manager just gave us, what are you falling in acreage-wise, give or take, do you know?
Maybe an acre and a quarter, possibly, sir.
As you see, that's something certainly, we're going to definitely look at that very much.
Yes, sir, yeah, and I, you know, I understand your dilemma, and, and, you know, one thing about Guthrie, that's what, that's what I appreciate about it, is it's a, it's a little historic gem, and, and like, you know, I don't want people just throwing something up, and there we are, the rest of us have to look at it and deal with it, and you've got, I like the overlay idea, and like you said, that needs to be kind of tweaked and looked at, because as we've driven around, where I think I'm really in a historic area, I can get outside of what I think is historic and still see some pretty cool structures. So, anyway.
So you applied for a building permit, and that's how this was brought to your attention?
Yes, yeah.
Do you mind if I ask how, how you were educated on the process?
Yeah.
What is our normal process for educating new residents on what the requirements are?
For a building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I knew I needed to go to the city and get a permit before any work was commenced, so I went to the city, spoke to them, found out their requirements, and the gentleman I spoke to, he said, "Yeah, certainly," said, "You can build any metal, any building you want except metal." And I said, "Well, that's a problem for me, because the building is metal." And when he said it, I knew exactly what the problem was in Guthrie because of the historic area, but the building that I'm proposing to put up is a professional, nice, clean, well-built building.
Well, and we know they're much better than they used to be.
Yes, sir, yeah, but we also know most time in Oklahoma, someone will go out and put up a lean-to, and then there you go. That happens a lot, you know, you can go out to Harrah, Choctaw, Midwest City, the other surrounding areas, and that's what you see.
We appreciate your thoughts on that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll let you know about the, our upcoming workshop. We'll get on this in a hurry and expedite everything we can and get you, get you in a building.
Okay, sir, I appreciate it.
Next, let's get this guy in the front, yeah, they're all pointing to you, Mr. Burcher. Somebody help him up there, will you?
Oh, I got, just, some parts wake up later than others do. Mr. Chair?
Name, name and address, please.
My name is Chuck Burcher, B-U-R-T-C-H-E-R, and I'm 5111 Quail Drive, like a bird.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Again, I share the same gratitude for the work that's been put in by the city manager and Rebecca. I know this is time-consuming, and they, they really look like they've looked over the historical part to make that happen. I live out by the lake where everything is three-quarters of a lot to a lot, I mean, acre, three-quarters of an acre. I have a classic car, a '73 Buick Riviera. I also have a Polaris four-wheel vehicle, and I think to be made to put that outside to deteriorate, I understand where the stillman's coming from. You have a money investment, and to go rent property to keep that in, we all know financially that's money down a rat hole, it'll never come back. So we're growing a younger population that want to move to Guthrie, and if we continue to put the handcuffs on them in an area out around the lake that have big lots, I know in Edmond, there's some $350,000 homes, got a nice metal workshop behind it that matches the colors, and that is my intention to make everything match. My house has already been painted, I put an eight-foot wooden fence across the front of my place, all of my outbuildings have been done, I've invested $6,000 to make sure that I am by code for, for a building. So, like I say, we're growing town, and as long as people can buy lots out of town and think, put a shed up without ever coming to a board, I appreciate that we have that, that we have to stand up to it, and I think most people, I understand there can be some bad ones, but this is my house, I don't know how much longer I'll be on this earth, and I'd like to have something that my wife can get the most money out of when that time comes. So you put a house, I have a four-bedroom, two-bath, and when you put that house and then you put a nice workshop behind it, that everything ties them together, my wife will be able to do well if and when I, I'm not planning on dying, let me bring that up, up front, I'm, that's not in my agenda, but it's just a money investment. This young man that just spoke, I surely appreciate what he's talking about, and he wants to get about business, so...
I'm assuming, are we talking in your situation, metal building, talking size, what are you particularly actually...
Thirty by 40.
Three, what was yours?
Thirty by 40, 10-foot.
Thirty by 40?
Yes, sir.
And height?
10-foot tall.
And metal?
Yes, sir, yes.
You've already built yours, right?
Yes, yeah.
How large is your property again, sir?
How, sir?
How large is your property again?
It's three-quarters of an acre.
Okay.
Three-quarters of an acre, and...
And your building's what, square-footed?
Thirty by 40.
1,200 square feet.
Okay.
And I'm going to assume, unlike the other gentleman, you must not have come down and asked first.
Well, you know what they say about assuming, so, we can leave that alone.
Appreciate your thoughts and comments, Mr. Burcher, very much, and we will let you know also, again, I think we've got an excellent start on this draft, and I think we've already heard some things from you folks, and I know there's a couple other of the commission members and that want to add, and if we sit around a little roundtable, we can put something together pretty quickly, it sounds like we got a gentleman...
I'd just like to thank all of you for your time, listening. I know this is not an easy job. I've appointed some people to this board when I was mayor, and I always look for somebody that I thought had good common sense, and I don't think I made a mistake.
And you signed these rules.
I did.
But I'm...
To clarify that on...
You were the mayor when these rules were...
But things have changed over the years.
They have.
Things have definitely changed, but me nor my council never signed anything that would make somebody have to go in financial debt to break a, to break a barn, or break a shop. We would have never done that. This was brought to us as a, as a council that the entrances and exits of our community have to abide with a 40/60 deal. If somebody puts some other information in that, I've already called my vice mayor, and I've called my other councilmen across the board, said we never signed anything that would get involved with...
That's way down, that's way down the river, and we need to, we need to, we need to expedite some of the new thinking, and we'll certainly consider, we appreciate you.
Let's make that clear, because I've been here twice and visited with Joe and told Joe, we did not sign anything that had to do with somebody building a nice shop behind, basically, a suburban area out around the lake, and...
Well, that area got annexed, and as you well know, sometime after the rest of it. So these are all things that we're going to consider, and Mr. Alsup and the gang are doing a good job of that.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Rebecca, for your time and energy, and we've come a long ways to find a city manager that's got on the ball with this yet. As when I was a mayor, I dealt with people that was just looking to go to Calif, to Texas where the big money was, and they used Guthrie as a stepping stone, and we've got somebody that would like to be called to Guthrie here, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes.
Okay, well, all right, go ahead, that's all right, that's all right, you're up, you're up, go ahead.
Greg Gummerson, 6411 Lake Shore Drive, out by Guthrie Lake. I haven't really decided what I'm going to put up, but I've been waiting three to four months to find out if I can do a metal building. I'm looking, I got a bid of $36,000 before electricity and plumbing on a metal building. I live on a half-acre lot. The building size would be a three-car garage, 30 by 40 with a 10-foot lean-to, so it'd be actually a 40 by 40 pad, is what I'd like to put in. The cost is just crazy in comparison. I've got the, you know, I'm looking at maybe 50 to 60,000 once I do electricity, plumbing, and a driveway, which nine out of 10 homes in my area don't even have a driveway, other than gravel. I just got a bid for $85,000. Gentleman didn't even want to do it afterwards, he said, "I really don't have time to mess with it." My last bid was for $108,000.
You're saying what, for stick framing and things?
To do it, build it like a home, like what, what we're being asked to do, $108,000.
Do you have the area behind your area, as we're speaking here, for, behind, that you can, that you can do your, put the, the structure behind your home?
Yes.
Out on the side?
Yes, sir, and I'm planning on putting a concrete driveway on the back. I've got a concrete driveway on the front, but, you know, if that's what I need to do to keep up with city code...
You have access from two roads?
Yes, yes, and it's a very small road, very rarely even used, there's five properties possibly on that, other than people with buildings that are 30 to 40-foot tall that have been put in, in the 10 years that I've been out there. There was a metal garage put in up front, in front of the homes, probably five years ago, that, that I don't know...
Blocks your view of the lake, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, it doesn't block mine, but it blocks some people's view, and that huge place next to...
It's three, four homes right down from yours, I know where yours is.
Yeah, yeah, that's about five houses down from mine, and I don't want to put anything out front. I sit in my backyard, and I want it the view of the lake, and by adding on to the side of the house, even if I went with the three-car garage over there, it blocks the view completely, so I've decided to, I spent $8,000 removing trees out of the back of my yard, and now I'm looking at neighbors that I've never seen in my life, because I've been put on hold on this.
You heard Mr. Alford's comments on, on the metal, pre-finished, pre-installed finish, raised standing, standing seams, 26-gauge corner trims. I'm assuming that you have investigated quality that would meet that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and I appreciate all the work that you all have done. I, I probably wasn't the nicest person when I came in here the day that I found out that you couldn't put metal buildings up, but I did come in to get a permit. My father would roll over in his grave had I not done that. I did that when I put in a small wood building with no electricity in my backyard. So that's what I'm asking. I, I'm not in a historic district, and none of my neighbors, all of my neighbors actually offered to come in today with me because they don't have a problem with it. Three-fourths of the homes out there have, on my row, have a metal building behind them. I don't want to go crazy and go high with it, but I, I'm going to do 10-foot walls, so I don't know what that would put the roof peak at, but, you know, it's, it's going to give other people behind me view. The neighbors are so happy that they can see the lake for a change. I mean, I had 50 to 60-year-old trees back there that I've removed to get ready for this, now I'm just kind of in a holding pattern. Like Chuck, I've got a couple vehicles I'd like to be able to tinker with, and, and some older vehicles that I'd like to put in there, and a boat that I've got sitting on the side of my house, I've got a Jeep that, you know, sits outside that I'd like to get put up, too, because I feel like it's kind of an eyesore where I'm at in my own yard, because I'm not allowed to do this.
You say you're looking at 10-foot walls?
Yes, sir.
Your home is probably 8-foot walls?
Yes, sir.
And see, I think that's something that, that will become something to discuss. I, I think the majority of the feeling is that they don't want, they don't want your outbuilding to overpower your home as far as it looks, so it's just something to think about.
My lot, Mr. Ogden, goes up...
Okay.
Towards the back, so I could, I could put up six-foot walls and a roof, and I'd still be visible from behind, from in front of my house.
But these are all things, as I hope you understand there, Mr. Gummerson, that, you know, try to take into consideration for your neighbors and for the neighborhood, so...
Certainly, I've talked to my neighbors, and, and they're all okay with what I, what I'm, you know, asking to do, but I appreciate everything that you all have done, and, I mean, I want the historic district to remain historic. Guthrie's a wonderful place. My father was mayor here. I, I respect everything that you all do, but, I mean, when you think about it, the parks, they put up metal cover buildings, I mean, I drove by one coming here. There were two new homes that were put up on Lake Road. Both of those have metal buildings. One of them was done nicely... One of them was done nicely with rock around it. The other one, no, it's just a metal building that's just out there in the middle of nowhere, and...
We've heard about that building.
Yeah, yeah, and then right across from that are two container buildings, you know...
They're grandfathered in, though.
True, true, I understand that, I understand that, and I will leave it at that.
One of our problems, of course, as you well know, is some of those metal buildings, they've got put up bootlegged in, for those that understand that.
Right.
No permit, and, uh, that's nothing that the, the commission can do, that just has to be enforcement by the city.
But I do think that, you know, that brings up a point that you've mentioned about all these buildings that have gone up. I mean, we can, we can create these new rules, and it doesn't, you know, right now, my faith in the, the ability of the city to enforce the rules is, I, I don't know, I don't know if anybody's been fined, and I've never asked, so it's not like anyone's keeping information from me, but it does seem like if you build it, you get to keep it, and if you ask permission, you can't have it, and that...
It's not fair.
It's about the gold deal, it's usually a forgiveness.
The enforcement, the enforcement part of it needs to be revisited. If people build a building that isn't permitted, they need to be fined. If they build a building that meets all the requirements, but it's built in front of their house, it, they need to be fined, and it needs to be moved. And that, that's the problem that we've been having. If you build it, you keep it.
And the young lady, our very first, our very first speaker mentioned that, so...
You don't know how tempted I've been to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gummerson, appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much.
I think I saw one more in the back, please.
Can you real quick?
No, that's all right, come on up and...
All right. I'm new to Guthrie as well, with my wife Sylvia. My name's Art Adkison.
Art?
And we're at two thirteen Foster Road. Our lot's two and a quarter acres, and it was a pretty rough piece of land when we bought it. It was just overgrown. It does have one metal building on it currently. It was there when we bought it, and we're building a, a new home on there, and it's like fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot house. It's going to cost us about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars by the time we're finished with it, with a metal roof. It's got a standing seam roof on it, and we're wanting to build a thirty-by-forty shop as well, with a ten-foot lean-to. Problem with our lot is it's only a hundred and thirty feet deep from the road, but it's six-hundred-and-five feet wide, and it's tapered downhill. So the house is on the second level, the shop would be on the third level down past the windmill that's, we have an existing windmill that we're going to restore, and that's what we want to do, and our shop's like thirty thousand dollars.
We have visited a little bit, and we need to visit some more, something like yours, where you're almost reaching, you used probably, for agriculture, one time.
Right, it was.
And, and then you have so much room in the front of the home, where, where can you put your accessory buildings? These are something that, again, I know we're trying to look at that particular side.
Yeah, we can set it back like seventy feet, probably, from the road, no problem, but...
But you, you almost couldn't be behind your home, is that what you're saying?
We cannot be behind our home at all, because the way our lot's laid out, it's going to be probably about a hundred and fifty feet to the west of the home, but down on a second level, so it wouldn't tower over the home. And the home is a two-story. It's a little farmhouse with big porches and stuff.
Have you investigated pricing?
Actually bought a kit before I talked to anybody, assuming that we could build metal buildings, because the lot right behind me has a kit, so I took about a three-thousand-dollar hickey on that. That's what it cost me to return the kit. After I came to the, tried to get a permit, and they told me no metal buildings, but...
Again, uh, you, you heard...
In a case like yours, it would probably be, you'd have to request a variance, because you're wanting to build in front of, the front of your house, right?
It would be beside my house. My lot runs east and west. It's a hundred and thirty feet deep, but it runs east and west, six-hundred-and-five feet.
Right.
And then at the bottom of our land, we put in a big drain system. It cost us five thousand dollars out of our pocket to prevent Foster Road from washing out on heavy rains.
Well, we think this is something where common sense comes in, and, and, and I, I think you'll find everybody to at least...
Yeah, and I'd like to have some...
Open-minded about that.
They want to come out and look at it, and, you know, before we do anything again, I'd be all for that, but we're needing it for story, just like the other people, you know, we need, we've got old vehicles, and I'm going to retire in about five years, I want to stay here the rest of my life, and just tinker, you know, and just enjoy Guthrie. That's my goal. But anyway, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
All right.
Anybody else? More people back there you haven't talked yet? Uh, thank you all. We really appreciate everybody on their input, and, uh, any follow-up there, Mr., Mr. City Manager?
What staff would ask is, you know, after you've heard from the, uh, general public that's in attendance tonight, you've talked about it a little bit, um, if this is a concept that you all, um, are receptive to, um, with tweaking, we'll try to flush out an actual ordinance for your next meeting, uh, so that you could either have a public hearing on it, or a workshop as part of your meeting, but you'll have an actual document that's in a finished form to, to go over, so that you could tweak it, uh, as you please, to recommend to the city council.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, uh, was just noting here that, to our, our folks that are in the, in the audience and, uh, and to our city manager, that between all of this, we got from him, out again, an excellent draft or pre-draft for us, we will compile, I want to compile all the information via a workshop. We've had these in the past, they've been very good for us. Clear back to digital lighting and things, where we can all sit around the table. We will let, uh, we can let the public know, correct, Ms. Blaine?
Yes.
And, uh, again, any of you that want to come back, maybe you've had another thought, we'll certainly take your thoughts and ideas into consideration, uh, but just one aim, and that is to do what's best for Guthrie, for everybody. And I think we've got an awful good way to start it. So as soon as we can plan a, a workshop, I would ask the staff to arrange that just as quickly as possible. We can get all five of our commissioners and get, if you, if you've prepared a, another pre-draft, so we say to look at. This is the first time we've always seen this, too, and a lot of good ideas there, so that we can actually come up with something that can, can be a final draft that you can take to city council.
What, what we will shoot for is trying to have something ready for the next planning commission meeting, and you can have the work session before the meeting, if you want to do it upstairs, and then it could also be on your meeting, in case you're ready to take some action.
Well, much like the city council does, they quite often have them before their meeting. I think that'd be a good idea.
Correct, but we'll shoot for the next meeting, so if anybody wants to attend, who will that be? Rebecca, when is the...
Our next meeting's going to be Thursday, October eleventh, so the second Thursday of every month is our regular meeting. That would make the workshop at four-thirty, and the meeting at five-thirty.
If that's acceptable to you all, that's the order.
I'll tell you what we can do, we can check with our other two commissioners. Can you gentlemen write that down and see how that'll look for your schedule?
I have a question. Um, do we have an idea of how many, uh, property owners are, have building permits that are on hold right now? And typically, what's our process for when we know that an ordinance is under review, and how long do we kind of keep those on hold versus just allowing them to be processed before the new ordinance goes into effect? Just so they have an idea of how long they might have to wait.
We probably got four or five people that are on hold that, that we're aware of?
Yeah, I've got, I've got six people on hold, and then, uh, many more that have just found out they couldn't have a metal building and have, you know, gone away. Um, I think a big reason is we want the public to feel like we hear their voice and what they're wanting, um, and then also, it does take staff time to, um, go through the ordinance with them, show them what we do have in place, um, and then also try to take into consideration all of the aspects, so that we can, um, do a new product, a new ordinance that, um, is very reasonable.
Yeah, of course, right now, the answer would be a flat no for most requests, so it's actually...
Staff, staff would not have the authority to grant something that was in, um, uh, not consistent with the standing ordinance. Uh, we don't have the authority to make those decisions on our own. I can tell you that one individual come to our attention, they met, built a metal building, and we have issued them a notice, and, uh, we have put it on hold until this ordinance is, uh, acted on. If you don't allow metal buildings where that metal building went up, we will ask that individual to remove it. Uh, hopefully that, uh, where this particular metal building is, it will be accommodated through this, this ordinance process. I can't address enforcement prior to nineteen months ago, because that's when I started, but, um, hopefully we do a more proactive in the future. I think we've got two good code enforcement and building inspectors on staff now that we hope to keep around for a number of years, and our enforcement process, I hope, improves.
Thank you, yeah, so I know it's hard to wait, but at least now it's kind of a maybe instead of just no.
Well, we have two of you here, a reason to get going.
You know, one concern that I just want to say, so that you guys can be thinking about this, is that, you know, is, is the size of these buildings, the height of these buildings, um, like right now, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I don't know if you all know where I live, but I live on Park Street. I live on an acre, so I could build a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot metal building in my backyard, correct? Unless I'm in the overlay district. So...
We are looking, we normally get twenty by thirty, twenty, or thirty by forty is some of the standard buildings that we requested. Uh, we probably will limit, no matter what size acreage you have, that your outbuilding cannot be larger in square footages than your primary residence. You don't want to have a two-thousand-square-foot home and a five-thousand-square shop set next to it. So that will be one limitation. It, it can't be larger. I've seen one where it can't be more than fifty percent the size of your house. Uh, so we're looking at that, uh, we're talking about roofs that are either fourteen, uh, to the, the peak, fourteen to sixteen-foot tall would be the tallest you could go. The sixteen-foot would be for the wider, bigger buildings in the larger area. Um, so some of them you will be able to see over the roof line. Um, uh, but yes, I mean, we want to come up with something reasonable, so that if you build an, an accessory building that serves your purpose, but we don't want it dominating your lot or dominating the neighborhood.
You're overpowering your home. Uh, could we also maybe ask you to look into, consider, we've been asked about the less than two-hundred-square-footers we don't need to, we don't need to permit, but we have never addressed, and it's been brought to our attention, that you could put numerous under two-hundred-square-footers on your site, and we maybe need to take a look at that.
We are looking at, you can only, to come up with a rule that you can only have so many auxiliary buildings on your property.
And I don't know if there's something that you've seen in any other communities about this mother-in-law home that has been expressed to us, uh, and of course, you know, that's great for mother-in-law when she moves in, but then when she's gone, there's concern that renters take over and stuff like that. I don't know if that's an issue you...
We, we, we might want to address that in the next round...
Separately.
Uh, because one of our concerns with today's world is if you have, well, we typically called in the old-school mother-in-law quarters, now with all of the rental properties online, it, it, it may be originally a tenant for a mother-in-law's quarter, and then all of a sudden, it's secondary income, and we're still trying to wrestle through that on how does that change the nature of the neighborhood if everybody has a rental property behind their house all of a sudden, calling it a mother-in-law quarters? And so we're still trying to get our arms around that issue, so...
Great.
We may want to address this first, because we've got some people waiting on it, and then come back and look at the mother-in-law quarters after we can do a little more research on it.
And I know it's a separate issue that we'll have to spend time on separately, but just to go on the record in saying, I think some of those, um, mother-in-law, uh, options can be a solution for affordable housing and also aging in place, as well as, um, providing affordability to a family that might want to move in and, and supplement their mortgage by having rental income.
And, and we don't disagree with, with that, we just want to make sure that as we move forward, sometimes when you do something, there's unintended consequences...
Of course, of course.
Well, there's one, I mean, before you got here, I, there, I know that there's a mother-in-law's house on East Ridge Drive, and it's a trailer. I mean, it's a portable home type thing, but see, that, that's one of the, you know, then, 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 then you've got, you know, a little mobile home in the backyard.
Correct. So anyway, we just want to make sure we have time to...
And you don't want grandma living in the metal shed in the backyard either, you know, if you want to know the truth.
Right.
Unattended, or unintended consequences.
Of course, yeah.
If I could have one more comment, please?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want you to step out of line. Thanks. Uh, you guys know, anybody in here has known me any amount of time, uh, this community still calls on me, and they call on me on a regular basis because I listen, and I know, I may not know your name, but I know your face, I know what you do for a living, and, you know, uh, I refereed your kids in Little League and coached them and all that stuff. The reason I have done what I've done is because this needed to come to closure. Number one, my council never signed anything that had these outlandish rules, that nobody out in the, in the suburbia could build a shop, and, uh, the people have come to me and come to me at church, at coffee, at fundraisers. Chuck, I want to build a building, and I want to build a nice one, and I'll put my building up against anybody's building. And so I did it, so we could get this to the table, to right thinkers, to get this thing done. I have paid my two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for a permit, and I have done everything that the regulations said I should do, painting my house, painting my outbuildings that's behind my house. So there is going to be an influx, if we get this thing taken care of, of people putting two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars up to build a nice barn that is covered by the city codes. But it just, this has gone on for how many years, Joe? And every time I come, it's the same deal. Well, Chuck, you signed that. Well, you're telling me I signed a forgery, because me or my council would not have done that.
It's in my book.
Huh?
Well, that's in your book, but that, that has no bearing.
I know. I, I don't, I don't doubt that it's, that I signed one.
But I will say, Chuck, I will say that when you read these, uh, building design standards, they're subject to interpretation. So I mean, and I, and I mean that honestly, they're subject to, I can see why you think that you didn't, that, that this was taken in a direction that you didn't intend, is what I'm saying.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
I think city manager looked at the minutes of that meeting, and it was very vague, but nobody ever said, "It only makes good sense, planning commission, to put top-quality buildings on entrances and exits of our community."
But not everybody has done that.
And I designed that in great big print.
But nobody has, not everybody has done that, and that's why these issues need to be addressed. And I must, we must not forget that for many years ahead of this group, there were other planning commissions and other city councils, that this book is made up of an awful lot of good ordinances, well-meaning, and everything else. Now, the fact that they can't be tweaked or whatever, that's what we're here to do now, and we appreciate you bringing that up.
And as the city attorney told me one time when I was mayor, Chuck, we got so many ordinances, we can't abide by all of them, and we just keep adding them.
These ordinances, um, and even the ones that you signed were, I feel like they were, you know, ten years ago, they, they were, they were trying to protect old Guthrie.
Yeah, and I'm a hundred percent for you. I've walked these streets and the top path too many times, not to respect that.
So anyway, um, there just needs to be some...
Anyway, I'm, and what I'm just trying to say is there's an undertone in this community, community-wide, that people want to build a nice building and, and, and do all. Mine is buy the numbers, and, but it just had to be brought out. Now, I don't look at Facebook, because I don't want to know when someone's going to Walmart. Now, I don't look at Facebook because I don't want to know when someone's going to Walmart. So don't get stirred up because you saw something on Facebook. I try to do this for the little man in this community.
Do I need to go look at Facebook? Is there something interesting?
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Burge.
Thank you.
Moving on to everybody else down here out there. Thank you so much for your interest and your concern and you put the date on there for October fourteenth, is that correct?
Eleventh.
Eleventh, approximately four-thirty PM. It'll be published or something and we'll carry on. Let's move on with our, our agenda, staff comments. Ms. Blaine?
I would just say that we're trying to fine-tune wall height, building size. We're looking at a percentage of impervious surface per lot. So any additional driveways, the footprint of the building, we want to make sure that when someone does an accessory structure, it's not flooding their neighbor. So all these things are things that we'll take into consideration that were said this evening and that are in the draft and then the comments from you commissioners to have a draft ordinance for our workshop in our next session.
Okay, as far as the workshop, we were considering maybe no more than two items because we want to get things accomplished. We were going to consider some time on the fencing. If between you and the, the chief over here, you think we, we got time to do that, fine. Otherwise, let's maybe just hold it straight to this subject, whatever, whatever you two think. Is that fine? Any comments from you, Mr. City Manager?
No, but you need to approve your minutes.
We can't approve them, Matt. We don't have them.
Oh, you don't have them?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the reason. But thank, thank you for the reminder.
One other question and, and this, we got a lot of material yesterday. I mean, a lot. And I read over it and, you know, I can't really find the things that I read, but I, one of the things that interested me, and I don't see it on the new ordinances, was about the certain roof lines that would need to have, oh, like a hangover on the side.
Overhang-ish?
Overhang?
Yes.
I don't know, I didn't see that in the new...
There, there is in the draft that Rebecca handed out, I think, in the section that had to do with the pitch of the roof. I just didn't put it in my summary notes because I didn't get into it.
Well, four-point-twelve pitch and guttering. Anyway, and I guess if, if we come across anything that we're concerned about, we can call you.
Yes, and also the additional historic areas that you want for us to try to include, if you would make us aware of those, we'll try to pick you out and include them either in the historic district overlay or create another overlay. We'd rather not have fifty overlay districts.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, and...
But if you have some areas, if you make us aware, we'll try to work those in.
And again, I know you, you folks are really busy down here and, and we appreciate that, but the sooner that you can get us kind of this retweet, retweet draft, if you will, plus some of the ideas that we heard tonight, the better, the more time that we have a chance to, to chat. Now, we can't chat over a couple of us at a time, but maybe we'd be a little bit better prepared for the, for the workshop, if I may say. Anything else, staff?
My, my comment would be a, a consideration along what Joe said earlier would be to consider, because I think there are historic elements in, in different areas. And I think a lot, in my neighborhood, you drive around and you see, I don't know, a hundred and fifteen-year-old home next to, you know...
One built in the seventies.
In the seventies and, and so I think some of, and you also see dilapidation next to, you know, the historic charm. And so I would like to bring all of those residences up to a certain standard. And in my mind, I'm thinking there's old, old Guthrie that's in town, it's historic and urban, and then you also have suburban and rural Guthrie. And in my mind, I don't have any issue with, with metal buildings out by the lake. I don't, I don't see how that would be an issue.
Well, trust me, there are some people...
Now, size, now, now, of course, I think size, based on the size of the lot, the size of the building makes a difference.
And that's why we have five of us, because I live out by the lake and I would be concerned about some metal building.
But as far as appearance and aesthetics go, I think in-town Guthrie, however we want to define those, those lines, in my, in my mind, just psychologically, I think in-town, urban, historic Guthrie is very different than, than suburban and rural Guthrie, so...
Okay, thank you. Other commission comments? Mr. Joe Chappell?
Um, no.
None. I think we've covered it. Again, thank you all so much for your interest. We all love Guthrie and that's why we're here. We consider ourselves adjourned?